For our officers' mental health. Today, residents of Birmingham are making a profound difference in the lives of our young people by serving as mentors. Supported by many private and public sector organizations that offer mentoring opportunities for our youth. And whereas thousands of Birmingham's children are in need of caring adult mentors in their lives. In closing this mentorship, mentoring gap will take more investment, partnerships, and volunteers ready to make a difference in a child's life. And whereas National Mentoring Month is an opportunity to raise public awareness of the importance of mentoring. Recognize the dedicated individuals who serve as mentors and encourage more residents to help build a brighter future for Birmingham's youth through mentoring. Now therefore, I Randall L. Wood for the Mayor of the City of Birmingham. Along with the Birmingham City Council do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty five as National Mentoring Month in the City of Birmingham. And also call upon the people of Birmingham to recognize the importance of mentoring to look for opportunities. To service mentors in their communities and to observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. At this time, Council, I would like to ask Ms. Johnson to come before you and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to recognize, I love your Alpha sweater. Alpha is a national partner of Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and they do so much for us locally, and we appreciate that. I come before you today with a different message than I had prepared than yesterday. With the news of federal funding cuts, we're looking at half of our budget at Big Brothers, Big Sisters being cut. Children in our program are matched with mentors who mentor them for years. They take these children and include them in their families. They become family. So if these federal funding cuts hold, we will be ripping families apart in Birmingham, Alabama. And that is a sad day for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. So my, where we go from here is we're going to be relying on our community to help these children even more. So we need help. We're going to need funding. We're going to need volunteers to step forward. Ninety-two percent of the children that we mentor are less likely to be arrested and go to jail. Our state pays thirty thousand dollars a year just to house and feed one inmate. We have twenty-six thousand inmates housed in Alabama right now. So if you do the math and you look at the cost of fifteen hundred dollars per child to mentor one child. Who will be ninety-two percent less likely to be arrested, it makes financial sense. So thank you. I won't hold you captive anymore. But thank you, Mayor, for recognizing the importance of mentoring in Birmingham. And I hope all of you, if, if funds are there, you'll consider supporting mentoring. Thank you.
One last note, Mr. President and Council. When we speak to neighborhood realization, we, something we've been talking about for numerous years, I know. Probably with the exception of District One and District Three. This literally is an issue in the other seven districts at a rate. That's on the higher end, definitely compared to one in three. With that said. And I'll be sure to provide this information in writing to you, but. I asked for a demolition breakdown yesterday by calendar year. And so not only by year, but I asked for city contracted demolition. That's money you all approve yearly. And then I've asked for private demolition and then the total, the total demolition for that calendar year combined. We got really, really aggressive in eighteen and nineteen, and so when you combine city demolition. As well as private demolition eighteen, we demoed five hundred and twenty-four. Properties that were beyond repair. In twenty nineteen, that number went up to five hundred and forty-two. And twenty twenty, it was four seventy-four. And then there's been a dip every year after, in twenty-one, it being two hundred and sixty-five. The next year, a hundred and ninety, a hundred and sixty-six in twenty-three, and last year, a hundred and seventy-nine. You will most likely see that number increase drastically this year based on some new things. PEP as well as the legal department have worked towards as regards to what you all have deemed priority. And being more aggressive in removing black citywide. When I get that additional information based on contractors knowing. Which properties have been identified beyond repair, the green light, monies dispersed, I can share with each of you. Where those would be taking place in your district so you can have the ready available information. And Mr. President, again, those numbers I gave you are combined city contracted. Based on the monies you approve as well as private owners taking care of their responsibility. With that, Mr. President and Council, that concludes the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't wander off too far. So this morning, we have presentations, so without objection, we'll suspend the rules for presentations. And I asked the mayor to hang around because this morning we want to recognize several or four precisely. Of our Birmingham area schools that made the state's top twenty-five most improved list. So this morning, we have representatives from Henry J. Oliver Elementary School. Richard Arrington Junior Elementary School, Inglethook Pre-K through eight school, and I-Three Academy. And I asked the mayor to stick around because as you're aware, Mayor Woodfin. Over the past year especially, really advocated for folks to get involved in the Page Pals program. And I am confident that that initiative had a lot to do with the improvements that we saw in reading. Achievement across the board. So without further ado, we want to recognize. We have several representatives from the Birmingham City Schools Board of Education. And in each of the schools this morning, so we would love to have you guys be recognized. And Superintendent Sullivan, Dr. Sullivan, if you would do the honors of introducing everyone, I appreciate it.
So good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the City Council. I was going to ask the mayor, can I just take that sweater from him? We are very proud in Birmingham City Schools. We say success stars here, but it's not just a tagline. It's actionable steps to improve academic outcomes for our students. And we have three schools here who have really put forth the effort to show that students, regardless of where they come from, can achieve and achieve at high levels. And so we're very proud to have the principal from Inglethook, K-H, Mr. Steve Brown, the principal from Oliver, Mrs. Bernie. As well as the principal from Arrington, Mr. Roper, to come up. And I'm going to ask the principals if they would say a few words, and then I'll have our board members to come up. So, Mr. Brown, I'll start with you.
Good morning, members of the City Council and Mayor. We're just thankful for the opportunity to receive this recognition. And we just encourage you to continue to support our schools by providing those programs in the community that can complement what we're doing. Thank you.
Good morning, Councilmen. Thank you all so much for this recognition. Standing next to me is one of our third grade teachers that did all the work last year. But I want to say thank you for this recognition. Look for Oliver next year because we're going to move up some more.
Good morning, Council. It's an honor and a privilege. This is a testament of all the hard work and dedication that our students, our parents, and our teachers have committed to education. So thank you guys for your support.
We also have, I have my board members here, so I, any board member want to share your thing? Just sharing a wave of the hand. And then Walt, come on, Walt, come on, I know you want to.
Good morning. I just want to thank you guys. What's happened in Birmingham City Schools over the last few years has been historic. And it couldn't have been done without this mayor and this city council. Yes, the teachers and the principals led the schools, but the support we've gotten from city government has been unprecedented. Thank you, guys.
And in addition, we should be really proud of the twenty-five schools that were highlighted in the twenty-five most improved, actually four from this area. So I'm going to ask Dr. Knowles, if he will come up with I-Three to give a few words as well. Dr. Knowles?
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here this morning, and this was very unexpected. So I am here representing about eight hundred students at I-Three Academy as well as one hundred faculty and staff members. And this year, we're actually number two, Dr. Sullivan, just for the record. We're number two in the state in improvement, and I'm blessed to have this opportunity. And growing up, I did not know that this opportunity could be given to students who are in poverty. But I tell my staff every day, to whom much is given, much is required. Thank you for this opportunity.
I'm not just saying this. It's actually extremely, it's actually extremely hard to come behind the people that are doing the work. I should have started. Dr. Sullivan, I want to thank you. You all should know the hand he was dealt when this state law came down. All right, so now we're in our second year of this wing, and we continue to see an uptick. That, that is because of hard work of not just this board and superintendent, but the people on the ground, the actual principals and your teachers. We spent a lot of time at Oliver last year, so I personally saw it firsthand. Dr. O'Quinn, I saw Ms. O'Quinn. The school saw my mom, saw a lot of city employees. But then we had people at other schools, other city employees at other schools. We had page pals, army of volunteers, army of retired teachers. This has been probably the most important community project the village could do on behalf of our school system and children. So that's just simply, literally, that's a lot of words to say thank you for your hard work. I know there's more work to do, and we stand prepared to support y'all any way we can. Congratulations on your hard work.
For Tim Alexander?
Well, thank you very much. I am very excited to be among the members of the council that are here to honor you today. As Mayor Woodfin says, it takes, I just don't even want to say it takes a village. It takes so much to bring our students to this level. And a lot of work and just a lot of blood, sweat, and tears went into the program. I apologize to you, Mr. Superintendent. I know when you wanted to announce that information, I kind of stole it and said it before you at an event. So I thank you for your kindness, and I'm just excited for everything that's being done in Birmingham City Schools right now. For the school board members, of course, we knew Walt was going to stand up and talk, right? Because that was D-seven, right? But anyway, for all of the school board members and the principals and the teacher, just love the fact, Ms. Bernie, that you brought your teacher with you today. We know that they are the foundation for making this type of success. To the board members, I thank you for the work that you're doing within the Birmingham City Schools. You've gotten out the weeds. You're not in the weeds. School board members not in the weeds. So I'm very excited for that as being a former school board member. And thank you for the support that you give to the superintendent and to the staff. Thank you very much.
Councilmore?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, you know, highlight the two schools out of D-four. With Dr. Steve Brown and, and Dr. Knowles, you know, for the hard work that you all are doing. It's always a testament to the, the, the success that you have when kids are excited to go to school. And I've seen firsthand, you know, the students that are at both environments and how much they enjoy, you know, being able to come to school each day and learn. And also to the teacher who is also a D-four resident. And I also want to just say, say thank you to Dr. Billups, or I'm sorry, Dr. Billups, Brother Derek Billups for his hard work as well. And Mr. Dr. Knowles, I mean, Dr. Sullivan, I'm all over the place. Dr. Sullivan and the rest of the school board members and principals, thank you all for the work that you do. It's definitely needed, and you know, the improvements that we make in our schools, we feel it in our city. So thank you.
Council Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend all of you for rising to the challenge and overcoming, you know, obstacles that have been placed before you. Because, and, and I think it just exemplifies, you know, what we're capable of and what we're made of. And I want to commend Youth Services and the mayor for the Page Pals initiative. There's still a flyer on the bulletin board in my church. It's probably a little outdated. But, you know, we got to volunteer, my office got to volunteer in Princeton Academy and Central Park. And I know that Princeton Academy celebrated some big gains too this cycle. So I just want to, you know, say hats off, and we can do this. Yeah.
Council Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to congratulate Dr. Sullivan and the mayor and everybody, my colleagues who all played a part. But I just really want to say this, when lemons are thrown at us, it shows that we can persevere and weather the storm. And I'm super excited, you know, just hearing, you know, I saw something this morning that the federal funding, you know, is being cut with grants and, and loans. And so I just want to encourage everybody that we, this is a time when we all have to move as a collective. And, and show the devil that he is a liar. No matter what is thrown at us or our kids. That we're not raising kids or pouring into kids to be incarcerated. They will be, you know, the next president, the next lawyer, or who they want to be in life. And so I really want to thank you all for, you know, throwing yourselves and sacrificing from your families to bring these kids up to par. And so I truly believe that the scholars in the Birmingham City Schools and all of us will continue to thrive in twenty-five.
Thank you. So we're recognizing those schools that made the top twenty-five list. But across the board in Birmingham City Schools, we really, you know, it was a success story. So, Dr. Sullivan, can you remind us where we started in the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four year? In terms of third grade reading attainment and where we ended that year, just across the board?
So when the test scores were given out in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, we had fifty-five percent of our students, fifty-three percent of our third graders reading on grade level. And we were able to move that to eighty-one percent on the first iteration of the test, and then eighty-six percent by the time the test was given again in the summer. So we are really excited about the work that's happening in our classrooms. But that, but not only that, you know, in Birmingham City Schools, when the A-Three F report card first came out, Birmingham scored a D. We had eighty-five percent of our schools had a D or an F. Right now, we have the highest report card grade than we've ever had post-pandemic, a seventy-four. We only have seven schools that receive an F, which we are working very diligently, and our goal is to have zero for next year. We have seen the largest year-over-year increase in enrollment in Birmingham City Schools in over thirty years. I mean, that is huge. People are coming back to the school system. We are proud of the work that's, that's happening, and we couldn't do this work alone. You, you mentioned this, Page Pals is one program, but we know that students can't learn if they have mental health challenges. You know, if you are sitting in a classroom and you had a toothache and somebody is trying to teach you reading or math, you would not focus on reading or math because your tooth is hurt. But if you have a mental, a mental health issues that are not easily seen equally, you cannot learn if you are not processing things well mentally. So the supporter of the city council and the mayor to provide a million dollars for mental health supports. Beyond that, you know, we, we, we were talking, I had cabinet meeting on Monday, we were talking about, you know, the Common Ground Program. And how that is impacting our young men initially, now young men and young women in all of our schools. I mean, the, the support that is coming from this side of the street to support what's going on in our schools. That is when, and Council Tate kind of hit it, we all have to be pushing in the same direction, all working together. When you see that, you see the kind of outcomes that we're beginning to see. You know, we were featured in the New York Times, Forbes Magazine, NBC Nightly News because of the work that's happening right here in Birmingham. People are looking to Birmingham to see how can they improve their school system. We are coming in February, we have what we call intercession. And we have two school systems, East Baton Rouge in Louisiana, they're going to come and see what's happening in Birmingham. As well as Linden County in Al, in Alabama, to see what's going on. They're going to have a bus of people going around to our schools to see how students are learning and engaging in Birmingham. And that is not just the work that's happening in the school system, but it's the work that's happening in the community and across our school district and across our city.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan, and thank you all. Principal Bernie, keep up the great work over at Oliver. Just, you know, Ms. Johnson with Big Brothers, Big Sisters talked about, you know, diverting kids away from a pathway to prison. And, and that's exactly what you guys are doing, you know. One of the things that I always think about is that for folks who are in the, the business of building prisons and housing inmates. They look at those third and fourth grade educational achievement to do projections on, you know, the size of the facilities that they need in the future. So you guys are having a profound impact on those children. And in, you know, giving them an opportunity to, you know, not only. Get away from that path, but to achieve, you know, things that benefit us all. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and keep up the good work. Okay, at this time, I'll read our statement on the conduct of business. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item numbers only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing. May request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any items removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Mr. Clark, could we please read through the items on our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Our consent agenda starts on page two with items one, two, and three. Page three, we have items four, five, six, and seven on consent. Skip over to page five, and we have items eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen on the consent agenda. Page six, we have items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen on consent. Page seven, we have items nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one on consent. Page eight, items twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four on consent. Please note that on item twenty-three, there's a correction, third line, above the third line from the bottom. That should be twelve dash twenty-five instead of seventy-six dash twenty-one. That's twelve dash twenty-five, bid number, twelve dash twenty-five. Page nine, we have items twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight on consent. Page ten, items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two are on consent. And on page eleven, we have items thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, and thirty-seven on consent.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove items from the consent agenda? Councilor Tate? Counselor Tate?
Item number fifteen, please.
Item fifteen on page six, removed from the consent agenda. Any others? Counsel Moore?
I didn't want to remove the item, but item eleven, just wanted, I had a question. Was this going to be in addition to the funding that has already been put towards PIT? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I don't want to take item sixteen off of the agenda. I just want to ask, is this a court settlement?
This is a D net success in District Four.
Okay, okay. So, and then I would like to take item twenty off the agenda, off the consent agenda.
Item twenty?
Yes, it's on page seven.
Okay.
And that's all.
All right. We also have items one through eight that are public hearing items. Do any members of the public wish to remove any of those items from the consent agenda? Seeing, Counsel Clark, you have a?
I just have a question about, we don't have to take them off, but in items eleven through thirteen, let's see, maybe there's that beloved any and all language. So, I just want to get a sense of what won't be coming to the city council if, when we approve this. Like, we're approving the allocation of the funds now, but there will be contracts pursuant to the funds that won't come back to city council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. This is just receiving the funds. Any any other funds that come out in the form of a contract still has to be approved by the council in accordance with three dash one dash seven. So, this is just accepting the funds that we're getting from the state. But when we have a contract that needs to be approved by the council that the mayor has to sign, the council will see that and have to approve that contract.
So, this would allow us to apply and execute like a grant agreement, like to say that we're, we accept the funds and what the terms of accepting those funds are. But if we, when we get ready to spend the funds through a contract with, say, CityWalk or, then that contract would come back to the council.
That will be an agreement between the city and the BJCC.
Okay. I just wanted to understand what, you know, how much authority are we granting? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Seeing no other questions, we are ready for a motion on the consent agenda.
Hold on a second.
Ms. Clark?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. The consent agenda is approved. So, I believe our first item is number eight.
Yes, sir. Item eight, a resolution assenting to the vacation of the following eight thousand and eleven square feet of the right-of-way that is located parallel to and between Fifth Avenue North and Sixth Avenue North, perpendicular to and between Fourteenth Street North and Fifteenth Street North on behalf of Hallmark ACQ LLC owners, so that the owner can consolidate property located at fourteen twenty-four Fifth Avenue North, Birmingham, in the hanging of all parties, case number S U B two thousand twenty-four dash eighty-seven.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Counselor Moore to conduct the public hearing on this item.
So moved. Thank you, Council President. I'll turn it over to you.
Good morning. My name is Roger Klow, and I serve as subdivision planning for the city of Birmingham. This is case S U B twenty twenty-four, case number eighty-seven, which is a resolution to determine whether the city council will give its assent to the vacation of eight thousand eleven square feet of right-of-way so that the owner can consolidate his property. One-third right-of-way vacation fee has been set at one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cents. On November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission did not recommend the approval of this vacation to the full council. On December seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, the Community Development Committee forwarded this vacation to the full council with a favorable recommendation. And we do have representation here to present the case.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I I missed a step. It's a permanent operation. If we want to pass it today, I need to do the UC for permanent operation.
Second?
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate?
Aye.
Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods? Counselor President Protem Alexander? Counsel President O'Quinn?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Yes, please have representation to come and speak to this item.
Thank you, Counselor Moore and all members of the council. My name is Mike Brown, eighteen nineteen, Fifth Avenue North. I'm here today with Jack Pease and Trey Hill, and of course, most importantly, with Donnie Oswald, who's the CFO of Hallmark Automotive. We are here, Hallmark is here, seeking a vacation of the alley at Fifth Avenue North. Hallmark Automotive owns all the parcels that touch this alleyway. The alley does not connect to any other alleys on either side of the side street. It's solely an alley between the parcels that are owned by Hallmark Automotive. Hallmark is seeking this vacation so that construct a new Hyundai dealership so that the site will connect the dealership and the service facilities that currently exist, and it will be expanded and new development for the city. Hallmark has an agreement with National Hyundai, the the dealership has an agreement with Hyundai, which requires it to make certain changes to its setup and how it's organized and what investment it needs to make to make the Hyundai dealership work. And this is a requirement to be able to do that. Hallmark is a significant contributor to the city. It owns the Chrysler dealership, the Nissan dealership, the Jeep dealership, Dodge, Ram, Subaru, and of course Hyundai. All of those are located in the city of Birmingham. Hallmark is committed to this project to redo and build a new dealership, which will have service and sales. It's a multimillion-dollar investment in the city. Estimate that I was given is approximately fifteen million dollars in improvements, fixed assets, and parts, parts and equipment. Hopefully, Hyundai will use this and Hallmark will use this to double annual sales and increase jobs with this construction project in the city. We'll, of course, have to work with city engineering and Alabama Power and Jefferson County on the final plans for construction. The general layout of the plan is shown there. It's probably in a package that you all have, but shows where the alley is and how the construction generally would work, look right now. We have not submitted that to engineering for approval. Of course, we'd have to do that as well. When we went before subdivision, the opposition to this was the hope of a future development of a different type, not including an automobile dealership, and so, some concern about keeping the alley. When we went before Counselor Moore's committee, we talked about that and talked about the opportunity that the city planning and engineering would have, that if there is a future development down the road, hopefully, after we have this alley vacated and have built a new dealership, but down the road, engineering would be able to require certain items that were of some concern at the subdivision committee. For example, location of dumpsters or things of that nature, if you were going to have that. And that would be something that could be done down the road. So, with that, we would ask your approval to vacate the alley. We're prepared to pay the money that was set forth by planning and zoning as a requirement that we would be buying the alleyway. Thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Yep. Counsel Williams?
I I'm sorry. I think I missed the very beginning. Mr. Brown, who did you say you're with?
I'm with Bradley around.
You're with Bradley. And then, your name is familiar. Did you not sue this council a couple of years back and name every one of us in litigation?
I I did. And I did represent a client that sued. I was the lawyer. Yes, I was.
And who, and who here, are, is everybody here from Bradley or is?
No, only Jack Pease and Trey Hill. And then, Mr. Oswald's here from Hallmark. He's the CFO of Hallmark.
Okay. I just, just refreshing my memory when you named us all in litigation, and you're back. Welcome back.
Counsel Clark?
Thank you. I just want to congratulate Hallmark on staying in Birmingham because operating with the street grid is pretty challenging and meeting all the standards of all the franchises that you represent. So, it's an important part of our tax base. We're one of the few cities that still has automobile dealers in the downtown. And I I feel like the city and the city council have worked hard in the past to, you know, accommodate you all and make sure you can operate within the confines of the street grid. So, you know, I think this is reasonable. We were concerned that it didn't pass the subdivision committee, but as you said, you know, one of the powers cities have is if we ever needed to condemn an alley, you know, through eminent domain for public, to reestablish the public right-of-way in the future, we could pursuant to a future development opportunity. But this is the bird in the hand. So, we, you know, we were comfortable sort of disagreeing with, our committee was comfortable disagreeing with the subdivision committee.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. President?
So, I know that, you know, probably the most important consideration is that in order to go forward with Hyundai, the Hyundai as a corporation is, you know, requiring these changes. But I also just wanted to add a little tidbit that under the current configuration, having that alleyway through the property has been a security challenge. And and so, this will also, this vacation will also address that issue and make it possible for the property owner to better secure the property. So, just wanted to add that detail.
And just to echo my colleagues', you know, sentiments, we definitely want to make sure that we keep you in the city of Birmingham. We appreciate everything that you all have been able to do down there and being a good city partner. So, if there are no further questions, yes, Counsel Abbott?
Yeah, just just one. You may have mentioned it, Mr. Brown, and I may have missed it. How many jobs are expected to be created with the new dealership?
Well, I'm not sure of the exact number that would be created. Currently, in this particular area, it's two hundred jobs.
Right now, we're two hundred to two twenty-five employees. But with increased sales, it could be, you know, from five salespeople that we have to ten. We've got, I think, three to four Hyundai technicians that are certified. So, as the business service increases, you know, we'd have to hire more service technicians, service advisors, which sell the service to the customer. Well, the construction jobs at the dealership wouldn't handle that, but there'd be, you know, the work to be done to build it and over time and how that might be handled, I don't know that.
Okay. Well, that that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay. Mr. President?
Any members?
Are there any members of the community that would like to speak to this item? If not, Mr. President, turn it back over to you.
All right. Thank you, Counsel Moore. Ms. Clark, we're ready for the vote.
Motion on the item.
I'm of approval.
All right. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Item eight is approved. Item nine, please.
Item nine. Item nine, an ordinance approving the sale of cemetery lot in the Oak Hill Cemetery, known as Lot nine oh six, spaces four, five, and six, to Sam Parker and Claire Parker, for a purchase price of fifteen thousand dollars and authorize the mayor to execute a D to convey such lot and to execute such other documents and instruments related to the sale of said cemetery lot as may be required to finalize the sale thereof. Just another item of permanent operation I need UC to pass.
Move for UC.
Counselor Member Abbott?
Aye.
Counselor Member Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Member Moore?
Aye.
Counselor Member Smithman?
Aye.
Counselor Member Tate? Counselor Member Williams?
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods? President Protem Alexander?
Aye.
Counsel President O'Quinn?
Aye.
I'm of approval.
Second?
Item is before you.
All right. I see we have with us Mr. Stuart Oates, who is the executive director of Oak Hill Cemetery. Want to offer any comments on this transaction?
It's rather routine. We don't sell very many lots, as you may know. The cemetery has been near full capacity for many years, but but occasionally people do wander up there and they're they're taken in by the beauty of the cemetery, which we need to get you all out there one day, just just come out and take a walk and look back at this beautiful city from up there and maybe catch a glimpse at our Cooper Hawks and foxes and other wildlife we do have in there. It's a beautiful place, enjoyed by a lot of people in the city daily.
Excellent. All right. Counsel Clark?
As creepy as it may sound to visit a cemetery, it is one of my favorite places. And it's it's like a walk through history because a lot of the oldest city fathers are buried there with these huge tombstones with these, like, narrative inscriptions. But I love that it's an integrated cemetery and some of our heroes, our black heroes are also, and I have to say, including Doris Powell, the Fountain Heights, the former Fountain Heights neighborhood president, the fighter. But A H Parker, Fred Fred Shuttlesworth.
A M Brown.
A M Brown, William Ruben Pettiford of the Penny Savings Bank, and on and on. So, it's a star-studded place. And it's just really beautiful, and it's been named one of five arboretums in the state. So, it really is a park and a place of history as much as it is a memorial site. Just wanted to give you that plug, Stuart.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Counsel Clark.
All right.
Anybody else have a question for me? We still have lots for sale, by the way, so.
All right. Thank you. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. Item nine is approved. Item ten, please.
Item ten, just to note, it was recommended by Budget and Finance in item ten, an ordinance pursuant to Act nineteen sixty-nine dash nine sixteen of the Acts of Alabama, authorize the mayor to enter to into local cooperation agreement with the Birmingham Water Works Board. The Birmingham Water Works Board to perform certain water sampling test services to include organic analysis, inorganic analysis, wet chemistry analysis, and microbiological analysis on as requested basis for a term of up to two years. The total cost to be paid by the city under said agreements should not exceed eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. This is another item of permanent operation. I need UC to pass it today. Counselor Member Abbott? Counselor Member Clark? Counselor Member Moore? Counselor Member Smithman? Counselor Member Tate? Counselor Member Williams? Counselor Member Woods? President Protem Alexander? Counsel President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Motion. Item is before you.
Okay. I have a question on this item. So, I assume this is for testing of our stormwater samples. Okay. All right. Any other questions? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item ten is approved. Item fifteen, please.
Item fifteen, a resolution authorizing the director of finance to pay Caleb Jones thirty thousand, four hundred dollars for the relocation, relocation housing payment to track number seven, Pratt Highway Bridge Replacement. Project number is T B P B H, that's sixteen oh two, located at six forty-eight Pratt Highway, Birmingham. Motion, please.
All right. Spin motion in a second. We have questions on this item?
Just wanted to ask the administration, this is that bridge going into Sandusky, correct? And so, the tenants have to be relocated. So, this, okay, thank you. So, Pratt City, this is the bridge, the capital project. Thank you.
Okay. There are no other questions. We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Item fifteen is approved. Item twenty, please.
All right, item twenty. A resolution accepting the lump sum bid, I'm sorry. All right, item 20. A resolution accepting the lump sum bid, I'm sorry. Yeah, 18, my bad.
Oh, we skip over, oh, that's, yes, I'm sorry. 18, please.
18, a resolution appointing three members to the Public Park and Recreation Board of the City of Birmingham, one term expired July the 16th, 2026, one term expired May the 9th, 2028, and one term expired July the 16th, 2030.
All right. Motion?
I'm of approval. Oh, no, don't, we don't do that on.
Oh, on, that's.
We don't do it.
Okay. Counselor Moore?
Yes. So these three members are Jason Avery will be appointed to replacing Will Brook, whose term will expire July 16th, 2030. Larry Holman will replace Jane, Jean Johnson Pettis, whose term will expire May 9th, 2028. And Ronnie Rice will be replacing Natasha Ivory, whose term will expire July 16th, 2026.
All right. Question, close the nominations?
Close the nominations. I moved to close the nominations.
Second.
All right. Any additional discussion? All right, Ms. Clark?
I'm of approval.
Second. Saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. Item 18 is approved. Now, item 20, Moore.
One second, please. Item 20. A resolution accepting lump sum bid at McAbby Construction Incorporated, 5724 21st Street, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, in the amount of $1,817,000 for Highland Park Pro Shop HVAC located at 3,300 Highland Avenue, Birmingham, Alabama, 35205. This being the lowest responsible and responsive bid submitted and authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with McAbby Construction Incorporated, substantially the form contained within the bid documents in the court with said bid, providing that the total compensation payable under that contract does not exceed the appropriation. Motion, please.
I'm of approval.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I wanted to just ask a few questions about this. This HVAC system has been broken down and inoperable for over nine months. And so I was wondering, well, I was appalled at the amount of money it was going to cost, but I wondered, when we only get one bid, how do we know that this is a reasonable price? Because we have no one to compare it with. So who makes that determination when we get only one person interested in the whole state of Alabama in a job this big? How do we know that this is reasonable?
Chief. So Counselor, to your question, I think during our bidding process, we try to do our due diligence by advertising all of our bids. And of course, we try to do even on the local level or around just the southeast of vendors that can actually bid on our projects. Unfortunately, this was the only one that came back for this particular complex HVAC replacement. So that's why it would be kind of hard for us to compare because I think a lot of vendors may not have the capability of doing this type of install in the space like complete removal and an install of a brand-new HVAC at Highland. So that's probably why we only got one back, but we still are in compliance with the Alabama State Bid Law.
Okay. Well, we're, we're happy that it's going to be fixed. I think everyone is delighted. It's just that the price tag on it seemed so incredibly high for such a, well, relatively small building. We were just wondering how that's determined, you know? Is this, is this good or not? Well, it's good because it's going to get done finally. So that was all I just wanted to know because it says it's the lowest responsible and responsive bids submitted, but it was the only one. So, yeah, I guess it is the, but still, just wondering.
Chief Moore, sorry, question. Chief Moore, is there asbestos abatement or something involved in this as part of the cost of the project?
I, I think our capital projects vetted the company and made sure that they had the actual capability of doing the project. So I think they had a specialized checklist that they wanted to do. So I think this is the only route that we have right now to try to get this project up and going. Because according, like Ms. Abbott said, this has been a longstanding issue that we've been trying to solve for quite some time.
Okay. Counselor Clark?
I was just thinking, you know, one of our colleagues says it's the lowest and the highest, but one thing about the process is I don't think the bidder knows that they're going to be the only bid. So they're, you know, competitively pricing it when they put it together. But, I mean, that's the only, we can't, we don't have any comparison, but I would think they have no way of knowing they're going to be the only bidder until the bid day and the sealed bids are taken and open. So there's probably some integrity in the process.
I'm not questioning anybody's integrity. I just saw the price tag and went, wow. And then there was no list of bidders because there was only one. So.
So, but we advertise. Do we still advertise in?
Yes, according to the state bill law, yes, we have to advertise.
And it is my understanding that electrical work has to be changed, you know?
It's very complex.
There's a lot to this project. Obviously, it was, it was like a train wreck. But still, still $2 million nearly. So that's all.
Okay. Any other questions? We're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Item 20 is approved. All right. That covers all of the business items. We're to new and old business. Counselor Clark, are you ready?
Well, District Eight Neighborhood Meetings, we've got the Bush Hills Meeting today at 6:30 in the Bush Hills Connection Complex. That's the former Woodrow Wilson School. The address is 1034th Terrace West. Also, the Birmingham Police Department, the West Precinct of the Birmingham Police Department, this Thursday, January 30th, between 5:30 and 7: In the Community Room of the West Precinct, we'll have a meet and greet. That's with the new captain, Raymond Cochran. So don't miss this chance to connect with Captain Cochran and learn more about the work being done in your community. And he really wants a big turnout. So let's show up and greet Captain Raymond Cochran and engage him. Also, there's a Black Heritage Fair coming up at the Public Library on February 1st. Now I'm looking for the flyer, but I don't see it. So just note that there's, it's the Black Genealogy Society who's doing a, a black music fair at the Public Library on February 1st. So look for information on that. Also, the Birmingham, I can't find the flyer, but I might find it before it's over. The Birmingham Museum of Art is thrilled to partner with Thank You Books for a conversation featuring Imani Perry and Andre Holland. Perry, a National Book Award-winning author, and Holland, an acclaimed actor, most recently starred in Exhibiting Forgiveness, directed by artist Titus Kaffar, will direct Perry's newest work, Black and Blues, How a Color Tells a Story of My People. The event takes place Sunday, February 9th, from 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. And you can go to artsbma.org for more information. So as you can see, Black History Month programming is really getting rolling. So we've got a lot to keep up with. And calling all train lovers, Slos Furnaces Historic, National Historic Landmark, and Live Trains Entertainment, entered into an exciting partnership that will allow people all over the world to stream, to stream video of the trains that pass by Slos Furnaces every day. So maybe that appeals to somebody. So you can check that out now at www.youtube.com/officiallivedtrains. And there's two different angles. You can check out all the trains that go through Birmingham without leaving your home. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. the Brownsville Heights Neighborhood will have their Neighborhood Association at 6:00 p.m. at the Brownsville Heights Community Center on Monday. Collisville will have their Neighborhood Association meeting at 6:00 p.m. on Monday as well at the Antioch Baptist Church. We have the Engle Nook Yoga Studio that will be having their, having an event called Men's Zen, which is yoga for men on, like I said, Friday, February 7th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. Please note that the Engle, Engle Nook Yoga Studio is located in the Engle Nook Neighborhood. Their studio entrance and parking is in the 42nd Avenue North, or on the 42nd Avenue North Road. To register, please go to englenookyogastudio.offeringtree.com. We also have the Black Male Summit, 2025 Black Male Summit, that will be taking place Saturday, February 8th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Hilton Birmingham Downtown at UAB. That address is 808 20th Street South, Birmingham, Alabama. This will be the third annual Black Male Summit. I know that, you know, this event is well-attended. And so if you are a black man in the city, please make sure that you attend this event. ACE Academy is actually taking applications for the spring 2025 class. It's now open. Their orientation will start March 6th. It's a seven-week class for anybody who wants to learn more about city government and how the city works. You could apply at www.birminghamal.gov/ace. We also have one current vacancy on the Birmingham Park and Recreation Board. Members appointed to this board must, let me see, must be a resident of the city of Birmingham. They must be a registered voter, over the age of 21, a taxpayer, and a real property owner. If you would like to apply for this board, please email dforinfo@birminghamal.gov. And that concludes my announcements. Mr. President?
All right. Thank you, Counselor Moore. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Planning and Zoning Committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February 12th at 3:30 p.m. here in the council chambers. Our last meeting was canceled due to the fact that the short-term rental version four was not ready, and we hope to have it ready by February the 12th. Planning, Engineering, and Permits and the Office of the City Attorney are both working on that project. The next Neighborhood Association meeting is the Glen Iris Neighborhood Meeting on Monday, February 3rd, at 6:30 p.m. at St. Elias Maranite Catholic Church. The Accessible Playground Equipment Purveyor will be at that meeting to show what will be installed in Bessie Estelle Park. This will be the city of Birmingham's first accessible park for all children, whether they are physically capable or handicapped or challenged in some other way. So we're excited about that. We've been working on this project for over 10 years now, and it's finally, it looks like it's coming to fruition. So, yes, we're excited about it. The council's already approved the money. It's great. So also, if you have any concerns or issues, we want to encourage you to call 311. But better than calling, put the app on your phone. It's MyBAM311. You can attach photographs. You can write a description of the problem just exactly the way you want it to be worded, and you can get action. And a picture's worth a thousand words. So you can go to the App Store or the Play Store to get that app and use it. So that's all for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. These are announcements for District Seven. As already been stated, our West Precinct captain will be hosting a meet and greet, and this is Thursday. So I join Counselor Clark in really wanting everyone to come out and have this opportunity to meet and greet with Captain Cochran. He is really excited about wanting to have us there and talk with all of us. So I hope we'll pack out the room. On Friday, February 14th, the men of Powderly will be having their annual Valentine for Seniors event. That'll be 12 to 3:00 p.m. at the Wiggins Park Recreation Center. They're encouraging all of us to come out and dress in our Valentine colors and attire, and there'll be food, games, and great fun. So thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
Counsel Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. No announcements for D2. I would like to move for a resolution of sympathy for Alex McCully, who is a resident, or was a resident of Forest Park, South Avondale, who tragically died this week. And I know that that community has reached out and is, I think that there's a, they feel a real loss there. So I'd like to move for a resolution sympathy for Alex.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
All right. Motion on a resolution?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Counsel Williams. Counselate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will be held tonight at 6:00 p.m. at the Fountain Heights Rec Center located at 1101 15th Avenue North. Dolomite Neighborhood Association also will be meeting tonight, and they'll do a conference call at 6:00 p.m. You can call in by dialing 720-843-2669. Access code is 3789426. Central Pratt Neighborhood Meeting will be meeting next Monday, February 3rd. They will also be doing a conference call. You can call in. That's at 6:00 p.m. You can call in at 720-740-9732. The passcode is 34888. Sherman Heights Neighborhood will be meeting on next Monday, February 3rd, also at 6:00 p.m. And that's a conference call. And you can call in at 95220-2064918. The passcode is 223418. The next public safety meeting will be held Tuesday, February 11th at 1:00 p.m. in the council chamber. Please submit agenda items no later than Wednesday, February 5th, by 12:00 noon to Gregory.Stanley@BirminghamAL.gov and to Ashanta.Cfus@BirminghamAL.gov. If you have questions or concerns, feel free to call the office at 254-2302. Mr. President, the Mackel Pine Seniors present a senior prom sorority semi-formal, and it's going to be February 11th, at 11:00 a.m. at Mackel Pine Park. So they will have, and it's located at 1115 Avenue F. Ansley, and they're going to have free food while supplies last. So they want to do, they're going to enjoy games, giveaways, and fashion show, is what they're saying. Also, I would like to make an announcement. I have been reappointed back to the Public Safety and Crime Prevention Federal Advocacy Committee for the National League of Cities. So very excited about serving again to represent the city of Birmingham. Thank you very kindly, Mr. President.
All right. Congratulations, Counselate. Counsel Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple announcements today. One, excited, we're starting to get some of our ARPA projects rolling out. One of the things we did was partner with I C Me to provide every kindergarten student in District One with their first library. And so we'll be kind of rolling it out this week at Martha Gaston's at the Sun Valley, Martha Gaston's today, Sun Valley tomorrow. We'll be presenting those and meeting with parents about the importance of reading. And statistics show, like, really more than any program, anything that you can do to impact the trajectory of a young person's life, is to have books in the house. Like, literally, the number of books in the household has a direct correlation to future success in school. And so we want to kind of just stress that importance, I think, you know, one, doing that, but also providing all of the kindergarten kids in the district with a whole little library to get their, get their, get their journey started. So excited about that. Also want to congratulate the Huffman High School Boys Basketball Team on a big win against Festavia. They've got one more game left in the regular season today, but they're sitting at 22 and 4, so they're rounding in the shape, looking really good. And just really proud of that program, doing a lot of good work. And also want to shout out one of the student athletes, Peyton Wiggins. He surpassed 2,000 points and became the Huffman High School all-time leading scorer in basketball. He surpassed two thousand points and, uh, became the Huffman High School all time leading scorer in basketball. And so, uh, definitely a significant, significant accomplishment. We wanna, uh, celebrate those milestones and encourage the youngsters to keep on keeping on. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Council Woods. Um, this morning, I wanna start out by re- recognizing our Birmingham Promise, uh, interns who are here with us in the audience. Um, interning with District One, we have Zamir McNeil with, who's a student at Huffman High School. Uh, in District Five, we have Amaya Da- Davis from Winona, Winona High School. She's actually returning from, uh, back to us from last, uh, semester. Um, in District Six, we have, uh, Antoria Gray, uh, who's a student at Ramsey High School, also returning from, uh, last fall. Uh, in District Seven, we have Chase Grayson, who's a student at Winona. And also, um, in District Nine, we have Mariama Diallo, who is a student at Jackson Olend High School. So thank you, guys, and look forward to working with you. I also want to recognize, um, my coun- colleague, Councilor Woods, on, um, becoming a reserve deputy with Jefferson County Sheriff's Office.
Top flight.
Um, have profound respect for all law enforcement, um, have even more respect for you now, Councilor Woods, as a law enforcement officer. Maybe you can stand in as our sergeant in arms. Um, but, you know, i- this is, this is a, a really big deal. From what I understand, um, the reserve deputy, um, training is quite extensive. Um, I, I believe that somebody told me it was a sixteen month long process, uh, to go through the training. So not, not a, uh, minor endeavor for sure. So again, um, uh, you know, much respect, so. All right. Uh, also, tonight, we have two neighborhood meetings. Fountain Heights Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at the Fountain Heights Rec Center, and Crestwood North Neighborhood Association will meet tonight at six thirty P M. at Girls Inc. We have a Transportation and Infrastructure Committee meeting that will occur on Monday, February tenth at two P M. here in the council chambers. Any items, uh, that folks want to submit to the agenda, please contact Kimberly dot Phillips at Birmingham A L dot gov, uh, or call the office at two oh five, two five four, two six seven nine. All right.
We forgot some stuff on this end. Um, you brought up Birmingham Promise, wanted to make note that, uh, Fast For Support Tuesdays, uh, is offered by the Birmingham Promise. Uh, if you know of a student or a parent in the city of Birmingham or in Birmingham City Schools that needs assistance with college, scholarship, or FASFA applications, they said, join us on our Fast For Support Tuesdays. Student Success Coach, uh, Quita will host virtual office hours on Tuesdays from five to seven P M. Uh, and you can find that information on BirminghamPromise dot org. So definitely wanted to make sure that I offered that up to anybody who would need that service.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Councilor Clark?
Thank you. Uh, the event I couldn't announce is the twenty twenty five Black Heritage Fair. It's being sponsored by the Birmingham African American Genealogy Group, and, uh, it's gonna have genealogy workshops, speakers, and musicians. It's from eleven to three on the ground floor of the Birmingham Public Library Downtown Branch. Um, also, uh, Hunter reminded me about the passing of Ms. Catherine Haddon, uh, one of our South Town senior residents. And, um, I got a call this weekend about her passing, so I'd like to, uh, motion for U C. for unanimous support for a resolution of sympathy.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Move the resolution.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we're ready for our public speakers. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Douglas Young?
Oh, I'm sorry. Council Abbott?
Good morning, city of Birmingham. Good morning, councilman and mayor. Uh, my name is Mr. Young. My address is five one seven Twenty Fourth Street, Enslie. Um, I s- do want to start out by saying, Council Woods, we did see you, uh, being an honorary, uh, sheriff. We appreciate that for the community of Birmingham. Great job, uh, Councilor Abbott. Um, I do want to just say, I, I appreciate you. Out of all the councilmen, I think you're probably the most, uh, upstanding or outspoken one. You're very, uh, opinionated, and, and we appreciate that. That's something that's very much so appreciated. Um, outside of that, I do want to let everyone, um, here, to be put on notice, um, on behalf of my estate and the people of Birmingham, to Mayor, um, Randall and all of the city councilmen, I have filed a complaint, and I sent a complaint to each one of you guys, um, inconsistent with the breach of trust, maladministration, and violation of, uh, civil rights regarding the people of Birmingham. And again, that's gonna be Randall Woodfin, Mayor Birmingham, in both his official and personal capacity for the record as being the chief executive officer for the city of Birmingham. I have Clint Woods, Hunter Williams, Valerie Abbott, William Parker, Daryl O'Quinn, Carol, uh, Crystal Smitherman, Jonathan Moore, Police Chief Michael Pickett, Lee Fraser, Clerk of Court, the actual city of Birmingham, David Commons, Kimberly Gardner. Again, these are gonna be for the allegations of failure to respond and act in good faith, favoritism and misuse of public funds, breach of public trust, intimidation and retaliation, and lack of transparency and accountability. And this is gonna be served in a federal and state law, um, county civil, um, county's civil lawsuit will be filed on behalf of, uh, East Trustee. And again, this is a notice from the beneficiaries acting in trust with the city of Birmingham. I appreciate you guys. Please govern yourself accord, uh, court, um, please govern yourself accordingly, and please take notice to the notice of claim that has now been, um, served and also sent to you guys. And on top of that, I'm gonna give you guys each one of these papers. If any resident within the city of Birmingham has ever been misused by law enforcement, feel like they've been mistreated, you guys can contact me in reference to a case law, uh, uh, a case lawsuit, and it could be a class action lawsuit. My email is grandconsultings. I do this for us, you guys, because without us, there is no city. We're the ones who make this go. When we, when we give them their money or their taxes, they work for us technically. We're the beneficiaries. And if our rights aren't being upheld, and if we don't have trust in them, there's no trust in the city. We literally, by law of the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the Articles, we, we don't have to listen to these people because we don't trust them. So everything in law and everything in life starts with trust. When you're gonna go and conquer a new country, you're gonna say, hey, I trust you to go conquer that country and bring back what I need to be brung back. So before anything ever got started, there was trust, and there's not much trust in Birmingham. I've tried multiple times to work with the city, but now I just have to come in and represent the city, um, the people for the city of Birmingham. Thank you, guys, again, so much. And again, I'm gonna pass this over to, uh, serve the legal department to make sure everyone gets a copy of this on the behalf of the people and the beneficiaries, again, this to the mayor, the councilman, and respect us from the city. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
This is Ms. Davis, Ollieian Davis.
Interesting to follow. Um, good morning. My name is, uh, Ollieian Davis. Um, I do agree with the last part that it is kind of difficult to contact certain people that are in office. However, um, the reason why I'm here is to ask about maybe a city ordinance or something that has to do with definitely District Six, District, District Six, Seven, and Eight as it regards to property management, buying the houses, and not having them habitable before they rent them. Um, there are a lot of turnover in the housing, changing over to property management companies. And if you do not have Section Eight, the house doesn't have to go through a full inspection before the resident comes in. I personally have been displaced twice, and it's been very difficult to, like, navigate certain things. However, in my navigation through the city of Birmingham, code enforcement told me to bring that to council. So I just wanted to ask you guys if that's a thing or could be a thing, or maybe even a city ordinance to where, at least locally, when the homes have transitioned from the owner to an entity, that the fixings of the home to Alabama Code or, um, I M P C, sorry if that, um, acronym is incorrect, be levied to the property owner so that they cannot evict us if the home is not habitable.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Um, I would suggest that you, um, sort of communicate to us in writing exactly, you know, what your concerns are so that we can follow up on those. So, you know, in general, I agree with you that, um, you know, it seems to be the case in Birmingham that we have property owners that, um, rent out, you know, uh, I don't wanna call them homes because they're, in many cases, um, contaminated with mold and have other issues or even, you know, don't have, um, power or running water, um, but yet still people are, are living in the, in then, in them. Um, so, um, just please help us by, just providing us, like, a full description of your exact circumstances so that we can follow up on that.
Um, yes, ma'am. By May, thank you so much for bringing this issue to us. Um, I did, we do, I have staff that's standing right back there so that we can give you more information so that you could contact us. If you could get that to us in writing, you did indicate Six, Seven, and Eight were the districts you're most concerned. Looking at your address, um, I was, wanted to see if you were in District Seven, but we want to assist in any way that we can. Yes, ma'am. And your a- address doesn't indicate that it's in D seven, but I understand if you've had an issue between other type places where you've lived. So if you'll just check with my chief of staff right there so that we can get more formal information, so that we can see how we could assist, okay? Thank you.
Yes, Council Clark?
I just wanted to, um, let Ms. Davis know that I represent District Eight, and I think this is a big problem all over the city, and that I too, I can just get the information from, um, uh, Ms. Alexander's staff. But we, we are, we do have to pursue legislation, and the landlord tenant laws very much favor the landlords and not the tenants in the state of Alabama. And to, for us to do something, we have to get, uh, authorization from Montgomery. But I think this, you know, we, we've been working on our housing policy toolkit a whole lot and making some improvements because we just haven't had a lot of tools to work with. Um, and I think that, uh, one of the initiatives we have going forward this time is around vacant property registration. But I think, you know, occupied property inspections are something we should pursue. And, you know, we'd have to work around the current landlord tenant laws. So I don't know how much we can do without authority from Montgomery, but we can definitely explore what we can do, uh, by way of ordinance. And then having the operating, um, we would have to invest in, you know, having the operating capacity to go out and perform the inspections, uh, if we can, uh, come up with something. But I think it's definitely needed. I appreciate you reminding us, um, because of the conditions that a lot of our citizens have to live in. Um, so thank you.
Yeah, um, just to expound on what Councilor Clark said. So, um, we have had a conversation in the city for a long time about creating a rental property registration ordinance. So if you look at how this works in other municipalities, it, it would create an, an inspection process where an inspector would actually go in and inspect a rental unit and have to certify that unit as inhabitable before it could be rented. Um, and this is done in a lot of other places. However, in Alabama, um, we have, the, the state has a law called the Alabama Landlord Tenant Act that, um, prohibits counties and municipalities from getting involved in the relationship between the landlord and the tenant. So, um, that has been a barrier to us creating that rental property registration ordinance. Um, so that's something that we have to deal with. Um, Council Moore, did you have a comment you wanted to follow up with? Okay. Council Williams?
No, I, I just want, Ms. Davis, I just wanted to thank you for bringing your concern to us. It's, you know, we are here every single Tuesday, and we get concerns that, um, have nothing to do with this city, have nothing to do with this county, and yours is very legitimate. And you, uh, I, I really appreciate, um, you bringing it to our attention. It's, it's nice when the public speakers, um, have a concern for the council, and it's something that we could work together to address. So thank, thank you for being here. Um, it's refreshing to see, uh, someone that's passionate about something, and I hope we can work together to get, get the issue solved.
All right. Council Moore?
Yeah, I did get a chance to speak to Ms. Davis briefly, um, but I do think that this is something that, you know, once we are able to get assistance, uh, from, uh, Montgomery on that the Community Development Committee, uh, can definitely work to push forward for all the residents in the city of Birmingham.
Yeah.
That would be helpful.
So, um, I actually used to work at, um, Jefferson County D H R, and I went to Montgomery because of some of the issues that were happening inside of that particular building, which is outside of, um, city. And now the state is actually in the building alongside of the local government. So if it's something that I need to do when it, in regards to going to Montgomery, I think that the issue at hand is that I don't have anyone from the local government supporting me because I don't know how to get that support. I've been in Birmingham since twenty twenty one. I actually was in the ACE program in twenty twenty two. And since then, it's been like, oh, we'll take your name and we'll take a number. And then they called me, and they're like, oh, well, we'll give you this resource. And then the resource doesn't necessarily benefit me or some of the residents that have the same issues that I have. So if it's anything that I could do, I don't mind driving to.
Well, I know that, um, Madam Protem has already asked for you to talk to the chief of staff, and so once you get an opportunity to speak with her and give her your information, uh, we'll connect with you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks. Um, I want to recognize our officers on duty. As always, we have Officer Cedric Kinker, who's based here in City Hall. We also have Officer Jones, uh, from City Hall, and Officer Lang- Langford from City Hall. Thank you. And that, uh, concludes all of our business. All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.